Good evening. We have a public hearing which will be followed by a meeting of the Urbana City Council. I've canceled the Cunningham Town Board meeting. We're going to reschedule that for Wednesday because the attorney needed more time to answer some questions that were given to him on Friday, but also because we have a lot of people that want to talk tonight and we didn't want to have to keep them waiting for an hour and a half. So this is the public hearing and it is about the ITV- ITV3. What is it? It doesn't say on the notice here.
The public hearing.
Oh, the franchise re-agreement.
Yes.
Okay, so we're receiving public comment on ITV3. Is there anyone who would like to comment on ITV3? I do have a letter from Helene Silverman. She was concerned about someone who came to her door. She doesn't want them to do that, I guess. Anyway, is there anyone who wants to comment on ITV3?
I'll comment on that, but I'm wondering whether you're going to look at that stack of requests for comment over there in front of Phyllis?
Yes. They've been given to me and that will be at the Urbana City Council meeting. This is just a very short hearing if you have a comment on ITV3.
About ITV3, I understand they're owned by Family Video. I don't know who owns them, but I was quite disappointed in not joining the municipalization of broadband that's happening in some progressive places around the country. It's really a shame.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on ITV3? Yes.
Will there be an opportunity to speak later when you're actually voting on it?
This is the hearing, so if you have a comment on ITV3, it would be appropriate to talk about it now. Do you want to say something now?
Good evening. My name is Dale Sinder and I'm a resident of Urbana in the Myra Ridge subdivision. And I'm also Vice Chair of the Champaign-Urbana Cable and Telecommunications Commission. I always have trouble getting all of that out, otherwise known as the Cable Commission. I should first point out that I'm speaking to you this evening simply as an individual member of the community and not as a representative of the Cable Commission since the Commission was not asked to participate in the process. But I do have concerns about one aspect of the proposed ITV3 franchise. And that concerns Section 4.1, the general franchise obligation. I've passed out a copy of the section to you. I've also provided that in email earlier today. I'm not going to bother to read the section from the ITV3 agreement or the Comcast franchise. I'm going to launch right into the discussion of it. There are quite a few large differences, or at least two large differences, in the obligations of Comcast and ITV under their respective proposed franchises. First, the provision for service is measured by proximity to existing infrastructure. ITV seeks in their franchise to use a radius of 1,200 feet from existing fiber, whereas the Comcast franchise requires service to be provided using a one-mile radius or 5,280 feet from existing cable. Second, ITV3 is not being required to provide service in an area until 15 households in that 1,200-foot radius have requested service, whereas Comcast is required to provide service where a minimum density of at least seven dwelling units per quarter mile exists. Just for comparison's sake, rather than using linear measures, converting that to an area where area goes as r squared, radius squared, we find that the Comcast required service area is approximately 19 times as large as the required area for ITV3 and their proposed franchise. To give a practical example of what this could mean to members of the community, I've chosen a location near where I live, the Myra Ridge subdivision, near the lower right of the map I handed out. The lower right corner of Ring 5 is a red box labeled 184. I believe that is a connection point probably to Carl Clinic and perhaps Christie Clinic. It's near the corner of Windsor Road and Myra Ridge Drive. This represents a point that's already connected to Ring 5 and therefore we can be fairly assured is a practical connection point for the Myra Ridge subdivision. If one looks at that, one finds that most of the Myra Ridge subdivision would fall within the 1,200-foot radius, but some would not, and the entirety of Deerfield Trails and South Ridge would be excluded until such time as the people who lived in the northern Myra Ridge subdivision should reach their 15 people in that radius. And so there is an inequity of opportunity to access built into that.
You have one minute, Mr. Sinder.
Okay, thank you. I will sum up then by moving to the bottom of my written comments and calling your attention to what I think might be a workable alternative, keeping the radius at one mile, but instead adding a clause which would require contiguous areas of the franchise area to be included such that Swiss cheese holes would not necessarily be developed within the franchise area due to the lack of service requests by those closer to the infrastructure than those farther from the infrastructure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Smelzer, did you want to talk?
Hello. Mike Smelzer, 2701 Southfield Court in Champaign. Many of you remember me from UC2B days. The rings he was just talking about, I designed where they go, or where they went. I'm here to support this franchise request from ITV3. They're in the business of providing services. They're not in the business of not providing services, so any concerns that they don't want to expand, they don't want to serve areas are really unfounded. Most of Champaign-Urbana, and certainly Urbana, you'd have a hard time being much more than 1,200 feet from where the rings are. There maybe are some areas that are right on the edge of that, but that's a very short-term thing. ITV3 is here to provide services and I think you'll find they're a very good partner. We've been talking to them for just about a year now and the First Gentleman spoke said, "Well, they're part of Family Video and he didn't know who Family Video was." Well, Family Video is a family-owned company. It's a privately-owned company. They're the kind of people that if your kids get an A on their report card, you get a free video rental. If they get two As, they get two free rentals. They don't have any competition anymore. They don't have to do that, but they still do that because that's kind of their core values. Every time I talk to the folks from Family Video, I'm encouraged by the corporate philosophy and the way they go about doing their business, and I think you'll enjoy having them as a partner in the city of Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment at the public hearing on ITV3? Would you like to say something? Now would be fine because we have another subject that most people are here for, so I think it's better if you talk now.
Levi Denkla, Vice President, Chief Operating Officer of ITV3. Obviously, I'm here in support of getting a franchise this evening, and I think it was a couple of months ago I was in front of you. Lots of things have happened since then. We think that we've worked out a good agreement with both Champaign and Urbana. We negotiated that agreement with both cities simultaneously. We have the agreement that's in front of you already signed and with the city of Champaign. For consistency's sake, we are looking to have the same agreement with the city of Urbana. I can speak to the issue of the differences here. First of all, that provision, you know, when you think and you go back in time as to why that provision is there and the build-out requirements, well, not Comcast, but whoever had the first cable plant here in Urbana, at the time, there was no cable. You didn't have access to it. So there had to be something in there since there was only one company, one provider, to compel people or businesses to build out to each and every resident of the community. The fact is, whether we are at your residence with our television product, which is what this is about, a cable television franchise, or not, does not impact your ability to access cable TV. Now, what we do is when we come in, we provide you with a competitive option, and for that reason, people very much want to see that, and we want to provide that. What we use is what we feel is a more responsive way of addressing build-outs. We use less space, you know, it's 1,200 feet instead of a mile for the requirement. We do use the amount of people that are requesting service, but we also do not put a cap. In other words, as your community grows, if people are signing up for it, we don't have the ability to say, "Oh, we're not going to go there, we're not going to go there." You know, so really the community itself decides where we end up. The other thing that I want to just state that Mr. Smelzer, I think, did a really good job of saying, "Our goal is to service the entire community." One of the things about the initial grant that was funded through UC2B and through this community as well as Champaign and the University of Illinois was a build-out of approximately 4,800 homes in the community. Those 4,800 homes in both communities would be the most likely areas to not meet the requirements of a build-out. Those are already built out. Those people are going to have access, those businesses are going to have access to the cable television product that we have. So I think a lot of the extenuating circumstances that could cause concern are already been addressed through the fact that, A, the rings are built out so extensively throughout the community that literally within 1,200 feet, almost everybody resides; and B, the areas that would be least likely to meet kind of the, you know, the areas that are going to struggle with digital guide issues already have access to the plant and already have access to our system. So with that, I would ask that the council support this this evening, and we look forward to doing business for a very long time in your community. Also, I am excited to also convey, since the last time I was here, we are building out the first neighborhood and our first permit for a neighborhood is in at the city right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, there's, we do have one question. Carol Ammons has a question for you.
I just wanted to ask, I had gotten a notice that the customers who are already part of the grant agreement that were part of the grant to get the UC2B funds here in the first place, under your transition, that their prices are being raised? Is that what is happening now?
No, we haven't raised anybody's prices.
Okay. Will they expire and raise it?
They will. So those prices are grant-funded, they're subsidized. We don't have any of those same subsidies. And so we are honoring the prices that are in place for the term. We haven't made a determination as to if we're going to have an option at a lower rate. We already have, you know, a $49 price point, but that's not the 1995 price point that the current customers get. Once again, though, that's a federally and state subsidized pricing that's in place.
And when does that grant agreement run out?
That's a customer-by-customer issue. They, all of the customers have contracts, and so as those expire, and by the way, the first of them have started to expire, and at this point in time, we've kept them at the 1995. Can I sit here and promise you that that's exactly what is going to happen from now and out? No. But just as a business case, if we already have a customer that has a connection and that connection has been paid for and all we have to provide is the internet service, we're far better off with them paying us $20 than to go somewhere else and then we get nothing. So that's the way that we've approached it so far. I can't promise that that'll be how we look at it two, three, five years from now, but at least today, the specific examples that have happened, we've kept them at the 1995 price point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to comment on ITV3? You have your hand up. You want to come up and talk? If you could keep your remarks to five minutes, please.
Yes, absolutely. Hi, I'm Patrick East, 1902 South Anderson Street. I just want to implore you to support this agreement. ITV3 and the partnership that it brings is very essential for our community. Without some sort of competition of high-speed internet, we are unable to communicate, or we are unable to compete with other communities in a likewise manner. This is an opportunity for us to really pull ourselves up and provide a partnership across communities that could really bring in business, really help retain students, retain the talent that we already have. I really think that this is extremely essential, that we consider this to be an essential partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for ITV3?
I'll keep this brief because, as you mentioned, there are other important issues, but I just wanted to say, in regard to the question from Carol Ammons about fees, I certainly hope that moving forward, that ITV will keep in mind how one of the big things that's made this project so relevant is creating high-speed internet that is accessible to people of most, if not all, income levels. And in this day and age, access to the internet is the only way to fully participate in one's place in society, education, access to jobs, et cetera. And as far as the bigger picture, I think, has been said, we have to remember that. So I think it's important, like with any healthy relationship, whether it's with an organization or a person, that you be critical of the stuff that isn't working, but I don't think just because ITV doesn't have everything in place and that we may need to challenge it and make some changes, that we should discount, as was said, the importance of having competition with an organization, Comcast, that is the national joke because of how bad and uncaring its customer service and customer relations are. I worked with UC2B when it was still under the umbrella of the State of Champaign and the university and everything, and I got to see firsthand some of the ways that the initial growing pains, you know, were really showing in the ways it had been poorly, but it was also, I don't think, any coincidence that when UC2B started to expand, Comcast was suddenly offering temporary rates that were the same as that 1999 price or slightly cheaper. But of course, with the inevitability that they'll bump those prices once they get people to opt out of UC2B, it's just they're predatory, they don't care about the interest of the people, and even if it has problems and even if we have to fight and negotiate to make sure ITV grows into what it needs to be, to be an asset to the people, we have an opportunity to work with it, grow something really amazing here that's already got national acclaim. So I hope the city of Urbana takes that all into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for ITV3? If not, I will close that hearing, and I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons? Here. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Mayor Pressing? Here. First item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, December 1st, 2014, and December 8th, 2014. Is there a motion? Still move. Motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Most of the people here are here to talk about the police department and militarization. There's one gentleman who asked to be first, and he wants to talk about taxes, so I will go with him first, and then the next person is Mariam Arrahim, who the group has asked to speak first.
New topic, taxes. I'm Howard Wakeland, 1811A Amber, Urbana, Illinois. I feel very much out of place here because, and not very well-prepared, because I'm very busy today. Nevertheless, I noticed in the paper last week that you have another fee that you're talking about, and as I understand it, it's the alarm, the city's first alarm registration and false alarm ordinance. And if it's put into place, as I understand it, it would essentially tax or ask for money from 1,000 alarms, which would pay $50 registration fee and $25 for annual renewal. We see this, quite frankly, as just another addition of a service which you really have very little to do with, but you're willing to tax it. So I may be wrong in some of the things I say. I told you, I'm not really well-prepared for this thing, but let me just give you a really quick rundown. We are now paying over $700,000 a year for real estate tax. By my, and I can give you actual figures if you need, but there are a few other taxes that have worked their way in. There's your rental registration, and I estimate we're paying $8,000 to $9,000 to that per year. Then there is the fire monitoring system, another system that you don't provide, but you have some service to it, obviously. We think that's about $14,000 a year. Now, there's an internet coming in, and we're toying with whether we want to buy into that or not. My point is that we have been trying to run a good rental organization on the west side of town. And all of these additional small taxes which you have add up, and we have to pay them. So I thought I would come down and at least register a complaint about yet another one. There's not much, you know, we have never, this is my first time I've ever been here to question taxes, first time ever, and we've been in business for quite a few years. But it is getting so large that we don't know whether we can continually exist, and that is something we're very seriously considering right now. So the only remedy that we have is just to leave Urbana. And I have to tell you very honestly, we're approaching that level. And so all of these little taxes that you don't think add up, they do. So we're paying a very heavy tax, and I'm just asking you to look at this new one you're talking about. I get the impression by the article, you have the right to charge that even without our vote. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but I get the impression from the article. So I'm going to make it short. We'd love to pay a few less taxes, okay?
Thank you very much. Did you have a question for Mr. Wakeland? Bill Brown has a question for you, Mr. Wakeland.
I wanted to clarify that we were talking about that, and the status of that was we kept it in committee, so we didn't. That was what was discussed, but the status is we kept it in committee, so it wasn't forwarded to this meeting. We won't be voting on it tonight, and we haven't passed it, so it's still up for discussion. And I think there was, there were different opinions on what it should be. So we're taking written comments on it, so thanks for your input.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Wakeland?
Mike Madigan has a question for you.
I just, sir, I just want to say, as another business owner here in town, I know you, but I don't know you, and I respect you for everything that you've done for the city, and you run a quality business, and I think everyone at the city acknowledges that. So I think your comments carry a lot of weight when you come here and talk about what you've just talked about. I'm in the restaurant business, and there are a lot of, you know, there are a lot of fees that I'm concerned about, and, you know, there are also some city services that I'm very happy to have, you know, available to my business. But I would wholeheartedly agree with you. I mean, I think we kept this in committee, and a lot of members of the council were very concerned about the registration aspect, and maybe what ultimately would be looked at would be folks who are chronic abusers of false alarms. And it does cost the police department a lot of time in terms of false alarm call, you know, responding to false alarm calls. The registration aspect of it, I don't think I can ever support. It's just another fee. But if somebody is repeatedly having the police come to their property because of false alarms, you know, that's at least something to look at. Again, I don't know.
Again, I cannot say I'm innocent on that because we have people who popcorn in the oven and you get a call.
Right.
Or they do some other stupid thing you and I would never think of doing, and you get a call. However, I have to say, there's the other side of the coin. We put a lot of money into those fire systems, roughly $30,000 for every system we put in.
Hang on a second, though. We're not talking fire here. This is, these are, these are security systems.
Security systems.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we're just talking about security systems here.
I didn't prepare to speak to that.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm glad we clarified that, and again, I just, I want to just, you know, give you my appreciation because you do run a quality business in this town, and I think Urbana's better off for it.
Well, I appreciate that. We'd like to stay in Urbana, and I don't have to tell you about the change in real estate in this town. It is unbelievable what's happening. I estimate we're going to have about 7,000 more apartments over a three-year period by the next year. That's the kind of growth we're seeing, that kind of competition we're seeing, and I hope they pay their taxes, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Wakeland. I think Carol Ammons wants to say something.
He doesn't have to sit there for me to say it. I just want, I just want the public to know that unfortunately, I won't necessarily vote on that issue, but I am sharing your sentiments on it. I don't believe we should do additional fines and fees around things that need to just be drilled down to figure out how to eliminate them. I don't think we need the extra fee. And I think they should come back with a solution that doesn't penalize everyone in the city who has security alarms that might go off or be triggered by who knows what. And so I'm also concerned about that, and like I said, I may not vote on that particular issue, but I would certainly be over there advocating on the other side to not have the additional fee structure.
Let me summarize by saying I was ill at ease to even come and talk about this. First time I've ever talked about taxes, ever. We should pay our taxes. We have to support the system. You know, we support the bus system, we pour it all. But the bottom line, I am very much appreciative of the fact you've called me back to this table three times to make additional comments. Am I done now?
Well, we thank you for running a very good business, so we appreciate it. Okay, Mariam Arrahim. And we're going to, if you would like five minutes, but after that, we're going to need to limit it to three minutes. I'd like to have it be about an hour, and I've got 18 people. So Mariam, go ahead.
Okay, and my name is Mariam.
Mariam, sorry.
Okay, thank you. We are a coalition of concerned Champaign County residents working to de-militarize our local police. Since Ferguson, the public has become aware of the trend toward police militarization, especially how it impacts the African-American community. The federal government's 1033 program, providing police with excess military equipment, has been exposed in the media. Through this program, M16 assault rifles have been given to our local police, and most alarmingly, a mine-resistant ambush-protected MRAP vehicle has been acquired by the Champaign County Sheriff's Office. We offer the following recommendations. We urge elected officials to instruct our law enforcement agencies to withdraw from the 1033 program. We call on Sheriff Dan Wash to decommission the MRAP. We're We're concerned about the lack of accountability in past acquisitions of military equipment and weapons. We ask that in the future, there be a process of public consultation before local law enforcement acquires this dangerous equipment. We ask that police develop clear policies for how to use these items, how these items will be used before being acquired. We insist that such weapons are not used against minors, especially in schools, peaceful protesters, nor in serving routine warrants of arrest. For more information, we encourage you to read "An Asset for Law, for Area Law Enforcement: Military Gear Has Its Critics Too," News Gazette, September 21, 2014, and also "The Manality of Police Militarization: How Champaign-Urbana Acquired Its MRAP," Truth Out, August 26, 2014. The Coalition for Police Militarization is comprised of these organizations. Champaign County NAACP, North End Men's Breakfast Club, Champaign-Urbana Citizens for Peace and Justice, the Ministerial Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and Vicinity, Champaign County ACLU, Champaign-Urbana Immigration Forum, GEO Solidarity Committee, AWARE, Central Illinois Jobs with Justice, Central Illinois Chapter of Progressive Democrats, Champaign County Young Democrats, Channing Murray Foundation, First Men of Night Church of Champaign-Urbana, Missions, Mercy and Justice Team at New Covenant Church, Social Action Committee of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Champaign-Urbana, Students for Justice in Palestine, Urbana-Champaign Friends Meeting, URUC Chapter of Amnesty International, School for Designing a Society, and the University YMCA. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Paul Muth. Would you please limit your remarks to three minutes? Thank you.
Concussion is not my forte, but I'll try. Well, I certainly second the idea that, that Urbana should affirmatively withdraw from the 1033 program. But I understood that people were going to address the issue of tasers, which hasn't been visited since May, I guess. I also have a complaint about the website. I already took it up with Jason. I was looking for the May 5 taser discussion, and I couldn't find it or searched for it, put it in, in the format. Anyway, that may be addressable, but I was going to talk to Bill Brown about that, but I didn't see him early. So I was going to perhaps replay, or at least count, the number of drop-the-knives that were in the intervention on East Main Street, where the suicidal self-cutting was going on in the middle of the street. And I was shocked when I heard that these people had been trained in crisis intervention. And then I heard it was Chicago. So I don't know how recently they had that training, but Memphis is really the place where it's been formulated. And I think maybe Urbana should get its money back from Chicago, because it was not a crisis intervention at all. It was repetitively dropped the knife, dropped the knife about fourteen or fifteen times. It was, it was not a way to calm somebody down, or try to get the guy out of the street, or anything like that. So I think there should be an effort to work on those skills before you talk about escalating the tension in the community by having tasers. Now, I think there was, in the 12th of May, a Virginia fellow who was in the police force talked about holding a taser and, and people just never having to use it, but as a threat, it was effective for him. But it seems to me that, that's pretty anecdotal, and I really think that TASER International's covering up a lot of their settlements, and I really think it's a much more dangerous product than, than people say. And it, it is a bit of a militarized approach to things, particularly when, as I say, the crisis intervention is, was so lacking by people who had been trained in it. And that's about all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did I get my address?
You don't have to if you don't want to.
Good evening. It's awfully hard to weed down five minutes to three minutes in a two-minute or five-minute The issue of the growing militarization of local police departments should be a concern to everyone. As objectionable as I find the MRAP as a policing tool, I realize it just symbolizes a larger community problem. How the changing of nature of policing is perceived by and affects various communities of people differently in Urbana. Military equipment, adoption of tasers, use of investigatory traffic stops, body cameras, use-of-force policies, police transparency and accountability are all fundamentally related, and all speak to a broader question. How do we want our local community to be pleased, and who should be making these decisions? Generally, police recommendations and input are important, but community values and concerns are as equally important. Who among us is assuring that policing decisions and practices reflect this balance of perspectives and values? Consider for a moment the 1033 program. It seems participation was an internal decision made by the sheriff and local police chiefs. The public was not consulted. Such an approach only further breeds mistrust and suspicion of police intentions. On November 12, the Urbana Police Department hosted a career expo for veteran and active-duty military veterans. Clearly, the UPD has decided to give preferential hiring treatment to former soldiers. I have concerns about overpopulating our police department with soldiers. I would prefer trained civilian officers with critical thinking skills, de-escalation skills, and cultural sensitivities. Should the community have a voice in who should be hired to serve and protect us? Unfortunately, not all segments of the community experience.
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
Experience the same type of policing. Whether you believe it or not, fear, trust, fear, mistrust, and lack of confidence in the police is a reality for many in our community. This is the major problem. Hear the chant, "Black Lives Matter." As long as racial disparities exist in policing, there is a problem we must face. There are first steps to take, and then second steps. The order is important. As a community, we have yet to successfully address racial disparities in policing in the poor state of police-community relations, yet there's talk of tasers and MRAPs. Once the first step is achieved, then let's talk about tasers and military equipment. Until the MRAP, until then, the MRAP should be decommissioned for use in Urbana, and the purchase of tasers postponed. I left a lot of information out. There's a lot more to this subject that needs to be talked about in more detail than I was able to say in three minutes and has shared. And sorry that couldn't be included. Thank you.
Well, this is not the end of the discussion. Mr. Cruz, it's not the end of the discussion, but Carol Ammons has a question for you.
I was just interested in two things. I didn't get your, usually you provide your written statement for us.
I did, but I marked it all up trying to get it, so I don't have it.
Trying to get it ready here. But I would ask what the top points are in your statement that you didn't get to give us, so that we can have them for tonight.
The key top points are that I think the city council and Urbana, first of all, we're in a partnership in this together, okay? It's not an adversarial relationship. It's not us against the city or the police department. We realize that as a community, we need to address these, these issues in a constructive sort of way. And I would simply say that the city council and Urbana Police Department hopefully realize that in serving the community, that is as hard as it may be for you, that it's important to listen more closely to the disenfranchised voices of the community, that it takes courage, and it takes your, to engage your most ardent critics to be present at the table. Because it's only when those people are included in a dialogue with you, that you'll be able to build the type of trust between the community, the city council, and the police department. And I haven't seen the city council, the police department, to embrace that courageous approach that needs to be done.
Can I ask you one other question?
Yes.
You raised something called the 1033 program.
1033 program.
I don't know what that is. I hadn't heard of it.
Yeah, the 1033 program was started in 2006, and it's surplus military equipment that is offered to local law enforcement departments, and they can apply for this equipment. And there's no cost to local law enforcement agencies to acquire this. The local law enforcements have been participating in the program for a number of years. I think information printed in the paper has simply told the public that there was no plans for how this equipment was going to be used, there was no use-of-force policies that were developed prior to acquisition of the equipment, and there was no public dialogue or consultation prior that they even wanted to have this type of equipment in their police forces. And so there was an article printed in the News Gazette on September 24 that kind of highlighted that. And so you can see the acquisition of M-16s, and I think the county sheriff has said he wants to try to get a armored Humvee next to add to the MRAP, in the article in the paper the other day. And so all I'm suggesting is that I understand what the law enforcement community is doing. I think the community dialogue in terms of its values and its perspectives need to be included, particularly when we look at the 1033 program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Benjamin Stone. Is Benjamin here?
I think he's in.
Okay.
Beldon Fields, 206 West Pennsylvania Avenue, Urbana. Before I say anything about the militarization issue, I just want to thank Carol Ammons for her service on this council. I guess this is going to be your last meeting here. She's on to, she's on to bigger, I don't know if they're better things, but I do appreciate, well, I appreciate all of your service. I think you spend a lot of time on the city business, and we need to, those of us who are sometimes critical of your decisions, still, you're the ones that bite the bullet and give us your time. So thank you all, and Chief Conley, too. Thank you. I do want, the, the issue of militarization is not new to me. In the late 90s and early 2000s, in my work on human rights, I wrote a lot about the militarization of police, and how it negatively impacted on human rights in the United States. It's one of the major problems of human rights in the United States. Part of it was the use of weaponry that is more appropriately used in warfare, not used within communities domestically. And of course, MRAP would be one of those things, and the high-velocity, rapid-fire rifles and basically machine guns that we saw in Ferguson there. But the taser, I think, is also a spin-off of that, and is particularly dangerous, I think, because of the way in which it is presented by TASER International as being a non-lethal weapon. In, in many cases, it has been. And also, I think we get a view, a good view of that corporation by how they tried to sue anybody who contends that it is the cause of a death. They say, oh, no, it's the heart that stops beating, that it's the cause. And if you say it's tasers, then we're going to take you to court. I have been critical of the Urbana Police Department on some points, basically two. One of them was on how it dealt with police complaints, and the other one is on police stops. But there's one thing in which I've always been proud of this department, and that is that it has, compared with the Department of Champaign, not been a violently aggressive department. It has tried to calm down situations. It has taken the time to do that. And that bothers me that we're going to introduce, or talking about introducing tasers, again, for two reasons. One of them, I don't think the Urbana Department needs it. I think the Urbana Department, Departments in contact situations functions the way I think police departments ought to function, that is, to de-escalate situations, take the time to deal. If you have a mentally ill person, take time to deal with it. Now, if that doesn't work, the sheriff.
You have one minute, Mr. Fields.
The taser, and can be called. The second thing that's very problematic to me is you bet your bottom dollar that if we get tasers here in Urbana, they're going to get them in Champaign. I and other people at CU Citizens on Peace and Justice have been before the Champaign Council, opposing terrorists because of the aggressiveness of that department, the violent aggressiveness of that department, and how they would use the tasers if they got them. We saw how they used pepper spray, and how they used fists plenty of times. Also, I think if we want to go toward community policing, and I think our chief has rightly said that's what he wants this to be all about, this is not the way to go. I think you really have to consider all of the groups here and their feelings. If you want to get the cooperation of the people, if you want to be helped by the community, you don't go against what they're asking you to do. So please seriously consider this. It will change policing in Champaign-Urbana if tasers are adopted. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. There's, Beldon, Beldon, there's a question here from Bill Brown.
Beldon, do you?
Yes, Bill.
I know recently there was a review by Obama administration of the 1033 program. I didn't really hear what, if anything, came out of that. It seems like they could at least provide some basic guidelines for usage, like don't use against peaceful demonstrators, things like that. Do you know if anything came out of that?
What I, what I read was they are considering limitations of the kinds of equipment that would be made available. But I don't think any final decision has been made as to what that would be, whether they would say, all right, people can have certain kinds of guns, but not MRAPs or whatever. I don't know, and I don't think that a final decision has been made on that, at least.
Oh, okay.
Well, Paul.
Paul.
Okay. All right. Well, Paul knew more about it than I did.
Okay, thank you.
Free to go.
Yes, you are free. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your service to the community, and thank you for this opportunity for providing input. My name is Dotte Vuro Weiss, and I live at 2103 Mills Drive in Urbana. I'm speaking on behalf of the Urbana-Champaign Friends Meeting. We join with the other groups in calling on the city council and the police department not to allow the use of military-style equipment, weapons, or tactics in Urbana. As friends, also known as Quakers, we oppose the use of war and violence as a way of resolving conflicts. This is based on a belief that traditionally was expressed as believing that there is that of God in every person. Others of us would say that everyone has a divine spark or goodness in them. Our approach isn't unique. It's expressed by many who say that we're all children of God. And this belief is the basis for our dedication to working to prevent violence and prevent war, and to treating all people and all groups of people with respect. By trying to relate to the goodness in each other, there's a greater chance of positive interactions and positive results. And so this isn't just a matter And so, this isn't just a matter of doing the thing that we think is the good thing to do, but it is also more effective. We support the efforts of the city departments and individual staff, including police officers, to foster good communication and build respect and trust with all the people of Urbana. We're very concerned, though, that having military-type equipment and weapons, such as an MRAP vehicle provided by the federal 1033 program, makes it easy for police to adopt the attitude that the individuals who are dealing with are enemies rather than fellow community members. Makes it easier for them not to treat these people with respect, not to communicate as effectively as possible with them. For community members, knowing that the police have these--
You have one minute, Ms. Weiss.
--weapons and equipment, thank you, make it harder, make them more likely to be in fear and distrust. And in a tense or conflict situation, it will be harder for the community member to see the police officer as a person, and harder for them to communicate effectively, too. With both sides acting out of fear and defensiveness, the situation's more likely to escalate into violence. So, we're concerned that having these weapons and equipment will make Urbana more dangerous rather than safer. It'll make it harder rather than easier for the police to do their job, and put them as well as community members more at risk of injury. The few settings where it might conceivably be helpful are outweighed by the many situations where it'd be detrimental. So, we urge you to take a step back and look at the larger perspective on how to decrease violence and injury to police and community members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ken Salo, is that how you pronounce your name?
Yep. Hi, good evening. I'm Ken Salo. I'm at 611 West Hills, Champaign. I'm an educator, so, and I teach in an area called urban studies. What I want to share today with the council is, there's a growing idea or an important notion, particularly in urban studies, of this idea of urban terrains as zones of conflict, and particularly cities. And it's a worrying form of research, and cities are particularly interesting phenomena. We'd like to think that they're also sites of creative potential. But I think increasingly, there's important, it's important to pay attention to this idea of the production, or the idea of cities as zones of conflicts with enemies lurking and, well, sufficiently orientalized enemies. And there are several circuits of this new military-civilian interaction, particularly on, in cities. Perhaps the most pernicious form of this, and it might sound frivolous, but I think it's an important issue, is for city governance, like the city council, to pay attention to the overwhelming production by the US military of urban video war games. I think this American warriors, these are critical issues, and when I teach my students, it says sometimes it has to be explained to them, you know, that these are not only just zones of conflict, but it seems this is, the way has become normalized is, you know, the, in fact, some of the hardware consoles for the new Predator drones are particularly, they resemble my kids' Playstation 3. So, and the idea that cities are new, particularly cultural zones of conflict. And I think this is where part of the ideas, that is the battlefield, and I think city governors, particularly those interested in public safety, need to take this notion very seriously, is the production by the US military of the idea of urban video war games and cities as sites of--
You have one minute, sir.
I think the other key issue, and I think is, now, there are the, you know, aspects, the ubiquitous form, and we don't need to be reminded about, let's say, the introduction of the, for example, the Humvee, right, as a militarized vehicle of choice by Blackwater as the hyper-aggressive form of cities driving. So, I think here's a long legacy of cities as zones of conflict that need to be taken more seriously, and the weaponizing and the militarizing, particularly, you know, of public safety. So, lastly, let me say, again, there's a lot of research and ideas out there about the use of city infrastructure, and particularly through discourse and metaphors such as the war on terrorism and the war on drugs, particularly the war on climate. I think that there is, the site of these zones are the cities. So, I want to just make an appeal for city governors like yourselves, interested in public safety, to take very seriously and to push back in all areas ideologically, symbolically, and materially against this idea of the city as an urban terrain as zones of conflict. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Salo, there's a question here from Dennis Roberts.
Yeah. I can totally agree with you with your premise. You're asking the city council to become watchdogs of the consciousness of, basically, the American, the American public, to not fall into the trap of believing that every other person you meet could be a potential enemy, when we have a media that addresses everything as if it was an alert. We're getting, you know, there are alerts to, I just received an alert this afternoon about a white van in a town that's, I don't know, like 200 miles away. What am I going to do with that? It came over by cellphone. It's a large question that should be addressed in a much larger forum, but are you asking the city council members to be the protectors of the consciousness of what is, what is the level, what is the standard of concern, or I would say, anxiety concerning issues of public safety?
That's a big, broad question. I think specifically what I want to address, city governor, city government's caution to, is this crossover between civilian and military forms of interaction, and particularly that the urban terrain, the city, has become the site for this sort of militarization. And there's this idea of presenting, you know, silver bullet type of technological solutions to complex social problems, right? And the, for better or for worse, the urban terrain is, we live in a world, we're in a world, the majority that's been urbanized, but this has become the terrain, both ideologically and the form of, you know, entertainment and news media sensationalized, to the reality of inequalities in the city and the policing of these zones that don't fit in. I mean, there's a lot of this that goes some way to explain Ferguson. It's not only just the racialized aspect, the fact that it's a part of the city that needs to be surveilled and controlled through this sort of militarization. So, I'm suggesting that the city government takes on board, one, the idea that it's a battle for hearts and minds as well as hardware and technology. Thank you.
Carol Ammons has a question.
I just want to ask you, have your students done any work specifically focused on Urbana and how the resources of Urbana, or even Champaign, but the policing resources that create what you just described in the urbanized areas that created a Ferguson?
Sadly, it's an area in my own field on urban studies that's been neglected. We'd much rather want to be around the idea of cities as sites of creative practice through interaction, but this is, I make a petition in my departments, and hopefully soon with the support of the city, to take this issue very seriously. So, this is what I'm advocating for, yeah.
Thank you very much. Stuart Levy.
Stuart Levy from 1108 Foley in Champaign. And though I live in Champaign, I work in Urbana, I spend a lot of time and money here. I feel like part of the community. So, thanks for letting me speak. I guess I'll say something first about the prospects of acquiring TASERS, which I hope you will decide not to do, partly because they're oversold and they're rife for abuse. Every week, if you look in the right places, every week around the country, there'll be a handful of new cases of where TASERS have been used against people who were restrained and not threatening anybody, against people who were, you know, simply disobedient, you know, not doing whatever an officer had asked them to, used by officers who were perhaps frightened or having a bad day, but they're instruments of control and intimidation. I'm, and an important thing to consider is, you know, how they get used depends a lot on the culture of the police department. And that culture, it may be good now, I understand that it is, but it comes and goes as police chiefs change. I just saw an article today, maybe Brian Dolliner will bring it up, of the police in Richmond, California, where a new chief had come in in the late 2000s. And since this new chief had come in, there had been no police-related deaths in a good-sized city with a lot of African-American people. So, cultures can change. So, even if the culture is good now, and if TASERS are, you know, are well-used for quite a while, that may not be true in the future, and by then, they will be hard to dislodge. There will be an entrenched set of people who say, "Well, we obviously have to have TASERS because we had them before." And Champaign will have them because Urbana has them.
You have one minute, sir.
One thing about the proposals looks encouraging, that, I'm sorry, the crisis intervention training is part of what would be given to the police along with TASERS. I think this is a good thing, but I think what the city should consider doing is shopping around for an effective crisis intervention training program and have police take that and not get TASERS, and see how, see how they're dealing with difficult situations changes. That's one. I'd like also to speak to militarization of the police. Other people have said very good things about it, but I'd like to remind us, as my sign today said, that bringing in military gear and military ways of thinking and military people is an invitation to treat the people on the streets of Urbana as they would be treated as if they were enemies on the battlefield. At home, constitutional rights should be paramount. That isn't even a question when we're, when we're, maybe it should be, it is not. Constitutional rights, we should have constitutional rights and not battlefield rules, and bringing in military gear is an invitation to the latter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ron Kester. Is that how your name is pronounced? Ron?
Ron Kester had to leave, but he asked that I make sure that you know that his, what he wanted to talk about was, it's marked on there and that it be record--
It says TASERS.
And was he for or against?
He is opposed.
Very good. That's what he wants, is that it goes on the record. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Karen Medina.
That's me. My name is Karen Medina, and I live in Champaign. But, as you know, the Urbana Police are much better than the Champaign Police, and so I'm here to talk about, first of all, I want to commend the Urbana Police for the demonstration, how they acted during the demonstration when we were in front of the courthouse for the Black Lives Matter. They were exceptional. They blocked off the streets, they did not try to shoot us, they did not try to taze us. So, I want to commend the Urbana Police for acting very well, exactly the opposite of what the Ferguson Police did, by the way. Okay. When we militarize our local police, we put the National Guard out of work. That's my sign. Oh, you guys get to see it on the TV. Okay. So, I'm taking the tact that taxes are important, as we started off the conversation this We pay federal taxes for our military, we pay state taxes, and they pay for the National Guard. The local taxes should stay local, and it should not go toward military arms. We already paid for them, by paying the federal taxes, so we should not have to pay for them again locally. I will mention that the MRAP gets three miles to the gallon. It weighs 49,600 pounds, is nine, somewhere between nine feet tall and 11 feet tall, maybe even 12. It can't go under bridges, it destroys streets when it drives on it, it hits power lines in some places, or sometimes its antennas get close enough to create an electrical arc, which may lead to electrocution of the passengers inside it. It has limited, as I stated, limited mobility off of--
You have one minute.
--main roads in urban areas and under bridges. The maintenance and repairs for it are very costly, it is difficult to train the drivers, the roads cave in, it's hard to see out of them. They could easily run over children without even noticing it, and I would prefer that my taxes went to training, crisis intervention training in particular, libraries, education, mental health services, low-income housing, homeless shelters, and issuing driver's licenses and training drivers for immigrants, training immigrants to be drivers. And I would prefer that my, if you have to spend it on equipment, that it be hybrid cars, bicycles, and shoes for the police officers. There you go.
Thank you very much. Laura Weiscamp.
So, they could walk.
Yes, we understood that.
Hello, I'm Laura Weiscamp. I live at 706 South Race in Urbana. I think I've got less than three minutes. I'd like to say that TASERS are just one more step in the militarization of the police. Due in part to the disproportionate representation of people of color in routine traffic stops, there is an understandable lack of trust that TASERS will always be used appropriately. TASER deaths are rising as more police departments use them aggressively, and as Mr. Levy said, as instruments of control and intimidation. I would advocate instead to allocate money for the establishment of better-trained crisis intervention teams, and with more officers trained in effective de-escalation techniques. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. I can't quite read the last name, but it's Jan, and it starts with a K, and it's 703 South Broadway.
Sheanne Kilmar wants to go on record for the topic of, what does she say, TASERS? Or is it demilitarization?
Militarization. She's opposed to it.
She is very opposed to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She had to leave.
Okay. Then Jay Brooks. Is Jay Brooks here? For the record, he is opposed to TASERS. Maya Bauer.
Same with Maya. She had to leave, too.
Okay.
And what was her?
She is, wants to demilitarize the Urbana Police Department.
All right.
Katie Friedel. Is she here?
I live at 790 Sunny Crest Drive, and I'm here, I'll be very brief, I just want to reiterate what everyone is saying, that I'm very much against TASERS and mostly, I'd like to invest that money in many other forms of opportunities for people that would be, the TASERS would be used against, including counseling for mental health, addiction, and I want to thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Stabler.
Hi, thanks, everyone. I also didn't know I was going to get to speak by registering my feelings, but I'm, you know, second all the emotions that have been expressed so far, and I guess just to add the overall, another thing that I think CU CPJ has been talking about is trying to avoid building another jail, and that the culture of incarceration goes along with the system of legalized apartheid that a lot of people are forced to live under, especially in the Midwest, in a part of the country that's marked by some downtowns and-- and endemic racism. And so, yeah, it's an extremely dangerous place to add new forms of weaponry and ways of causing harm and increasing inequality and distrust. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Evans?
Chris Evans, Ward 4, and thanks again for enduring public comment. I wanted to second what Daryl Cruz had to say about really encouraging the police and this council to consider a, some kind of town hall summit where we can begin to talk about the rules of engagement. I think before we can even have tasers, we got to start talking about what are the rules of engagement on the streets between police officers and citizens and really get to the heart of the matter. We have to understand that the police work now comes within a context. And that context is a very unpopular drug war, criminal civil forfeiture laws, and a public defender's office that is totally defunded and is operating with half the resources compared to handling the same number of cases as the state's attorney's office. So there's every incentive for citizens to not comply with police officers at this time. I would, and specifically, I came to talk about the TASER policy as drafted. I realize that this is a draft. And, but there were some things that jumped out at me that I think need further clarifying if you were to adopt tasers. The first is that in under 309.2, under the policy, it says that the TASER is intended to control a violent or potentially violent individual. And I would like to know, have some further clarification as to what makes a person potentially inviolent in an officer's mind. As we saw with the Eric Garner case, it was probably his size and color that caused that to happen. So we don't want to have that situation. There's also some other language that concerned me in the policy under 309.4, under verbal and visual warnings. It said after a verbal warning, an individual, and if an-
You have one minute, Mr. Evans.
This is a hard topic to do in three, but I'll, "An individual is unwilling to voluntarily comply with officers' lawful orders." Let me say that I've been, I've had a lot of police contacts, and some of the orders that I've been asked to follow are, what is your social security number? Where are you going? Where have you been? Where do you work? What is your phone number? Those are all lawful orders, to be sure. How much money do you have in your pocket? Those kind of questions are all lawful orders, but there are orders that I don't have to comply with. And I know the city council does not intend for a tasing to occur if you did not answer those questions. So just, I would definitely relook at this policy. But more importantly, I would really encourage the police to get with the community and start having some dialogue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Sutton?
I thoroughly agree with some of the previous speakers, and I am going to read my sign here. It's a sign which is meant for individuals and not people passing in cars because it's too much on too little area. I use the word militia here. Militia kill enemies rather than soldiers because I believe that with a volunteer army, volunteer military, we are getting self-selection for people who come from militias with maybe agendas, which they don't reveal. And then they are welcomed because of their training and the fact that they loved a long, a large number of, whatever they call, in Afghanistan, say, tours, they're called. And they didn't get PSD. Why? Partly because they expected, you know, they really liked that. So they come in, they become part of police forces all over the country. I'm worried that they still have an agenda. I have, under militia kill enemies, that's plural singular, I don't know. Police protect neighborhoods. There's a big difference. The neighborhood is supposed to hire the police to protect them. That's not true of a foreign army. For instance, they don't hire our army. The enemy don't. My middle thing says, dear cops, why look and act like militia? Live in the neighborhood. Walk the beat. Say hi. Play ball. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hannah Swoboda? Is she here? Apparently not. Art, Art- Artist James?
I'm Artist James with the Champaign County NAACP. And I'd just like to go on record one more time that the NAACP is against militarization of our local police department. And at this time, we are against tasers. One thing we think may be beneficial that could help the police department is the body cameras. And before I leave, I'd like to thank Carol Ammons for her community service and at the NAACP. Look forward to working with you on a state level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brian Dolaner?
Good evening. I'm Brian Dolaner. I live at 303 West Locust in Urbana. And thank you, Mayor Pressing, for accommodating us tonight. And thank you, council, for your patience. I wrote an article that appeared in Truthout on the sheriff's MRAP and looked through about 100 pages plus of documents related to the acquisition of the MRAP. And what I found was that Urbana police were centrally involved in the acquisition of the MRAP, which is why we're here tonight. Okay, it's not simply the sheriff's matter, but in fact, Urbana police are going to be riding in the MRAP. So we have a very basic request for you tonight is to disallow those Urbana police from riding in the MRAP truck. Everybody we talked to knows that truck is totally absurd and over the top. Yet, police fail to recognize this. And there's quite ample evidence in the documentation. You probably all know that the Urbana police is centrally involved in the sheriff SWAT team. Champaign police maintains its own SWAT team. Therefore, of the two major cities in town, Urbana is most heavily involved with the sheriff's county SWAT-wide, a multi-police department effort. Urbana plays a major role in the sheriff SWAT team. According to documents, early on, when they were considering acquiring the MRAP from the 1033 program, Urbana Lieutenant Richard Searls said, quote, "Can we afford to pass this up?" When it first arrived, Sergeant, Urbana Sergeant Jason Norton, on the SWAT team along with Richard Searls, Jason Norton was out in the middle of the night visiting the MRAP out in East Urbana. I would guess on his third shift, although I don't know that for sure. And lastly, when the MRAP was receiving a paint job, it was passed by Police Chief Pat Connolly. Connolly said, according to documents, he was, quote, "Fine."
You have one minute, Mr. Dolaner.
Moreover, we know that Urbana police has already participated in putting down peaceful protesters. Most specifically, May 2012, three Urbana police officers were sent to the NATO summit in Chicago. These three officers were Jay Lotion, Shannon Wolf, and Zachary Mikulik. We don't want these same tactics that we've seen in Ferguson, that we've seen on the streets of Chicago, New York, Oakland, LA, Seattle, elsewhere. We don't want these kind of military practices brought home. We know that we are a small Midwestern town, and that's why we like living here. We are not the south side of Chicago, as much as I love that place too. This is a different, distinctly different town, and people shouldn't, particularly the police should not buy into this idea that we are this kind of society at deep risk. Lastly, I just want to say again, what we are simply asking for, very simple proposal, that we come here and we ask for your time and consideration, do not allow the Urbana police to ride in that massive MRAP truck. I think that is something very easy and simple you all can decide upon right now, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you all for coming. And, oh, Carol would like to add something.
I just wanted to add a comment here. I wanted to ask Mr. Dolaner one question about his, for you and his research. When you did that research around the MRAP, how many of those were sent to other cities? And where did they go? Like, how does a police department decide to, I just want a military truck in my community?
Well, the federal government was giving them away, somewhat at free of cost, which is a big incentive. It was costing the federal government quite a bit to maintain this, you know, this equipment. These things cost a lot.
They don't drive it here? How did, do we pay for it?
We had to pay for the cost of shipping it here and painting it from its khaki-colored, sand color from the Middle East to a black and white. And it was largely the motivation of the local police. This was not the federal government shoving this down our throat. The argument put forth by the sheriff was simply that the one and two other trucks they have were outdated and inadequate. That was the basic argument put forward by the sheriff. And clearly, Urbana police fully agreed.
But we didn't have a truck like this before, right? We didn't have this truck. They weren't replacing truck for truck, right? This is different.
This is a much different kind of truck, indeed. A much larger, much more heavily armored, and much more menacing truck. Just seeing this, I don't know if you've seen a SWAT raid in your community.
I've only seen it on television. I haven't actually seen it.
But, you know, I had this, one of these happen two doors down from me. And a good kid who was, somebody ratted him out that he was selling some grass, and the police searched his house for four hours, ransacked his house, turned it upside down. He was a good kid in a stabilizing force in an apartment complex that was problematic. So I've seen other SWAT raids in town where M16s are on display, where trucks are out at 9:00 in the morning with kids looking on. I don't want my three-year-old witnessing cops with rifles drawn up and down my street. Or imagine this massive truck driving down the street. I mean, my three-year-old might think it's kind of cool. But I don't think that's really what we want to be teaching the youth.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Carol Ammons wants to say something.
I just wanted to make a closing comment. If I weren't sitting here, I would be sitting there. I would be supporting the notion that we don't want community policing to turn into militarized zones. We don't want to see our community as peaceful and bike-loving as we are. We have more bike lanes than any other city, I think in Illinois. But that we would take on the mindset to turn our police departments into military zones. I ran across Dr. Beldon Fields' book that I got from him when I first came here in the 90s. And it was really interesting because I also still had the notes that I took from his lecture at the University YMCA, where I first met Dr. Beldon Fields. And part of that note, I wanted to read it to you because it's really important for the council and it's really important for those who will come after me to understand really the dynamic that we're dealing with. And I wrote this down, Dr. Fields, and I want you to know that I still have these notes because it's important to me. It says, "The best way to understand human rights is not as a set of universal abstracts, but rather as a set of past and ongoing social practices rooted in the claims and struggles of people against what they consider to be political, economic, and social domination. What we've seen around the country is not an MRAP or SWAT team in every neighborhood. We've only seen them in neighborhoods of disenfranchised communities where you see large amounts of drug activity that by way of economic disparity dominate those communities." And we need to really work on that, and we need to change that by bringing economic development, opportunities, jobs, and living wages to our community. So this is part of our responsibility as a council. I also wanted to say that one of the things that came up to me tonight is, why are we talking about an MRAP that's in the county, right? Why are we talking about tasers? Why are we talking about militarization, high-power weapons? We're talking about those things because if people aren't paying attention, the reality is that you are turning your society into a us-versus-them society. And you've seen this played out from coast to coast. And if you don't have elected officials that understand that very basic premise, it's easy to understand why Mr., I just lost his name, came up and talked about the taxes, that talked about the taxes earlier. Why would he come and tell us that he doesn't? Mr. Lakeland, thank you. Wakeland. He doesn't want any more taxes. He comes and talks about that issue because that impacts his bottom line and the costs that he has to do to do business. And that's very difficult for him. So that is his interest to come and talk about taxes. And my colleague on the council does a good job protecting the business interests. But it is important for people to be on the council to protect the people without voices' interests. The poor people, those who are stopped disparagingly in our community, for whatever reason, there has to be representation on these issues. And further, we have to be careful not to ignore the facts that stand before us. So if you do not have the book by Dr. Beldon Fields called Rethinking Human Rights for the New Millennium, I suggest that you get it. I also suggest that you get Cities Under Siege so that you can really follow what is happening, not just on a state level, but the national level, with the militarization of police. Our unfortunately military and my brothers in the Marines, they have to come home, and they have to work somewhere. And often, they do join our police departments. But what kind of climate will they bring into those departments if resources and cities do not require some level of local participation? So I'm discouraged that I've heard, I didn't even know about the 1033 program until I saw the article by Dr. Brian Dolaner, and why we, as a council, would not have absolute interest in what our police department purchases. So I encourage us all to stay engaged in the issue, stay engaged in the topic, and absolutely demand transparency on this issue.
Well, I want to thank you all for coming. Certainly, we have a lot of work to do to increase understanding between the community and the police department. I know the Urbana Police Department is very committed to that. So we do have an ongoing conversation here, and I thank you for coming tonight. Okay, we will move on. We're not going to have the closed session, but we will do that on Wednesday. Unfinished business? I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with. Reports of standing committees, the Committee of the Whole.
All right. Last week, the Committee of the Whole met and forwarded to the city council quite a few items for consideration and approval. The first one is ordinance number 2014-12-113. An ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015. For the committee, I moved approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Bill?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Elizabeth for clarifying some things for me on the police and pension fund contributions. I understand now how the amortization works a little bit better. Instead of a level dollar amount that would be the same dollar amount toward the amortization every year, but it would be basically getting cheaper over time because of inflation. It'd be kind of like a standard mortgage. You know, your standard mortgage where you pay the same amount every month for 20 or 30 years, and it gets easier as you go along because inflation makes it easier. So instead of doing that, we're doing the- you go along because inflation makes it easier. So instead of doing that, we're doing the amortization as a level percentage of the payroll. So it would start out lower and increase as the payroll increases. So if we keep that policy, then over the 19-year period, it'll increase quite a bit. So I think we should look at the policy closer sometime earlier this year, early next year, and define it a little bit better and get it on paper so that the pension boards know what it is, so they know how it might change the way they decide to invest, or at least change what their recommendation might be next year if we decide to keep the same policy. And also, I think, get maybe some projections on various scenarios if our assumptions change, or if, you know, the assumptions we have are seven, I think, 7% interest and five-and-a-quarter increased payroll. And so some of those assumptions might not be solid, and it'd be nice to see how changes in those would affect our contributions depending on which plan we choose. But as it is, it looks like we're contributing close to, if not over, the actual cost, the present cost value of the pension that was incurred this year. And as a percentage of payroll, it's significant. It's 20, no, 30% for fire, and close to 40% I think for police. And that probably includes their 9.5% they contribute, but the city is still contributing a considerable amount. So I'm okay with following this policy for now, and it would be, it's also a closed policy so that over the 19-year period, it should fully amortize if all of our assumptions bear out. So I just wanted to say I'm okay with that policy for now, but I think we do need to kind of nail it down and get it in writing for the future.
Anyone else? Diane?
I think this is what drove us all into seeing Elizabeth for clarification, but I also wanted to thank her for spending time with me explaining this and also giving an overview of some of the plans she has for the next year for the Finance Department and what we need to do to really improve as we go forward. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
I don't vote on that one, or not?
Maybe, I don't know. Law, Mayor Pressing?
I think I do, yes.
Mayor Pressing?
I think we need five votes, so we got six.
And every budget, everything that changes the budget.
In the budget, I do, yeah. Okay, so that motion carries. Mr. Roberts?
Next is Ordinance 2014-12-114. An ordinance directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate the tax levy for the General Corporate Fund for the year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015. For the, for the committee, I move approval.
Second. Motion by Roberts, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. So we got everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
That motion carries.
Next is Ordinance Number 2014-12-115. An ordinance directing Champaign County Clerk to abate a portion of the 2014 tax levy related to their general obligation bonds for Series 2012 and the general obligation bonds Series 2014. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Ammons. Any comments or questions? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Okay, next is Ordinance Number 2014-12-116. An ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2014-15, having to do with wage increases for the IAFF, that's the firefighters, employees. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second. Motion by Roberts, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Next is Resolution Number 2014-12-00, no, -066R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a local agency and economic, local agency economic TARP agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation, having to do with Airport Road to Willow Road to Cunningham Avenue. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second. Motion by Roberts, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries.
All right, next is Resolution 2014-12-067R. A resolution establishing a Class II or a Class III designated truck route on Airport Road, Willow Road to Cunningham Avenue, which is Route, US Route 45. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second. Motion by Roberts, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries.
One more thing about Airport Road, and this is Ordinance Number 2014-12-117. An ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the year fiscal year 2014 to 15. This is about Airport Road, Willow Road to Cunningham Avenue, which is known as US Route 45. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second. Motion by Roberts, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Next is an ordinance Number 2014-12-118. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class B liquor licenses. This is for Hot Spot Restaurant LLC at 1809 South Philo Road. For the committee, I move approval.
Second. Carol's doing all the seconding.
It's Carol's big night.
She's trying to break the record here.
What will we do without you, Carol?
I don't know, Carol. Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Ammons.
And there's a question here?
Oh, there's a question. Okay, Mr. Madigan. Oh, yes, Mr. Madigan.
Yeah, as a liquor license holder, and the city of Urbana State law precludes me from participating in this discussion or deliberation or vote, so I shall recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Welcome back.
Welcome, yes, to Mr. Madigan.
Mr. Madigan. All right, last is Resolution Number 2014-12-068R. A resolution authorizing a cable franchise agreement between the City of Urbana and ITV3 Incorporated. And for the city, the committee of the whole, I move approval.
Second. All right. It's the same team. Roberts, seconded by Ammons.
It's a good partnership.
Yes.
It's about to dissolve.
Either, either, this is her farewell song. Although, you might be here later, I don't know. We'll work that out. Any, any questions or discussion on that one? Yes, Bill?
Yeah, maybe, I guess Jim would be the one that's presenting this. I am still a little frustrated that this couldn't have gone to the Cable Commission. That's kind of why we have it in the ordinance, that they're supposed to do this as far as approving franchises and negotiating them and coming up with equitable solutions. So I guess I'm kind of curious why the more liberal build-out things were necessary to get ITV. This is just the cable part of ITV3, right? Not the internet part. So to get them to provide cable, why does it need to be more liberal than our old franchise agreement with Comcast was?
I guess there's a question insofar as whether, in fact, it is more liberal, but I'll address that second rather than first. The provision in this agreement mirrors the provision in the agreement between UC2B Not-for-Profit and ITV3. I assume, and Levi probably could confirm, that they will probably be running cable over the same fiber optic network that they will be running the internet and telephone. As I understand it, they're going to be offering a triple-play program. Correct, Levi?
Correct.
And so to have two different build-out provisions for them, one would be onerous, and two, frankly, nonsensical. In terms of whether one being more liberal, I think Mike Smeltzer and Levi kind of got into that. First of all, Comcast has done most, if not all, its build-out, other than running lines right up to the houses. But separate from that, it's a matter of competitive equities or level playing field. The way the courts in Illinois, and there's really only one decision in the Northern District of Illinois, the way they look at it, the way courts look at it around the country, as well as here in Illinois, is they look at each provision, but then they look at each agreement in totality to see whether there is, in fact, a competitive disadvantage for one cable operator versus another. The Comcast agreement requires them to build out, period, or did require them to build out based on the formula provided. They could control how fast they wanted to build out, where they wanted to start, how they wanted to start. ITV3 does not have quite that same luxury. If three or four neighborhoods, let's say, sign on completely different ends of the city, ITV3 has to build out. If the neighborhoods don't subscribe to it, they just, you know, give an initial expression online, and they end up not subscribing, and they say, "You know what? I want my money back," or maybe two-thirds of them say, "I want my money back. I'm content with AT&amp;T or Comcast," ITV3 still remains obligated and will have built out that fiber optic system. So the community tends to control what ITV does more than ITV3.
I think that helps. I'd also just comment on some of the expression that all of the poorer areas basically have been built because of the grant funding. And that may be true for what's currently in the city, but the grant funding didn't cover anything that isn't, that's outside the city. I think it's worth remembering that between 25 and 30% of our Urbana School District children actually live outside the city. 25 to 30%. And of those, 25, 30%, 80% of those qualify for free or reduced lunch. So I think we have a large population living just outside the city, half of them in mobile home parks that eventually may be annexed, and I'm not convinced that this agreement would serve them in what we would hope to be the best, the best possible way, and help bridge that digital divide. So I guess maybe that comment should be more directed toward the ITV3, UC2B, whoever's kind of managing the, the Digital Divide Fund, or whatever it is that you call it, you know, the benefit fund, isn't it, something like that? So maybe that benefit fund could be directed in that, in that direction. But I think it's just something to keep in mind that these folks, even though they don't live in our city, they shop in our city, and they impact our schools, and they're a big part of our community, and we need to keep them in mind for whether they're annexed or not. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Mike?
I just have a quick question, and I may have missed this earlier. I know I got here a little bit late, and there may have been some discussion about this, but I, I think we all received email from Dale Sender, and he may have given comments tonight. But if somebody, and this can be, this can be offline later, but the whole issue about the 1,200-foot radius of the, of the 15 residents requesting service, for example, he raised the Myra Ridge example. What was the, what was the outcome of that? I mean, should I just talk to somebody privately after this? Was that resolved?
Because Comcast has a one-mile radius, this, this agreement talks about 1,200-foot radius of the, of the initial point of service. So somewhere like Myra Ridge would not be covered.
I think Mike Smeltzer answered that. He thought everybody would be covered. Is that correct?
Mike Smeltzer indicated that ITV3 is in the business of providing service, not in the business of avoiding the provision of service. That gets into what I was saying in terms of the competitive equities. As another example, while we do have a Comcast office here in Urbana, they're not obligated to be here under a franchise agreement. Champaign spent a year trying to negotiate their presence in Champaign. For some reason, Comcast refused to do it. I had a meeting last Friday with Comcast, and they brought up this provision, and they would like to possibly amend their cable agreement to include such a provision. And I said, "Well, if you're inclined to do that, then you're going to have to accept the entire ITV3 agreement. Otherwise, Comcast gets a competitive edge over ITV3." As I said, the level playing field statute doesn't require identical language or even identical provisions. It's just a matter of weighing the competitive equities. For some reason, Comcast doesn't want to be forced to keep an office or a customer facility in either town. I mean, they have one, but that doesn't mean they have to keep it here.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about where their office is. I'm just talking about, so, yeah.
I think the community...
Could we just come up? I really don't want to belabor this. I'm all about you guys. I think this is great. I, I think that you're turning a $30 million, you know, federal expense into what ultimately might be a positive thing, which a government entity could never do. So I'm all about you. But I, I'm just, I'm just, I have a resident in Myra Ridge, or, well, he's not necessarily there, but he's raising Myra Ridge as an example, and the, and the development south of there, and the 1,200-foot radius would not encompass that. I understand you're in the business of providing service and making money, and I am 100% supportive of that. I'm just wondering why the 1,200 feet as opposed to a mile or something different.
So a lot of, at the risk of getting too deep here, but a lot of this has to do with the practicality of how you engineer and deploy a network. You don't build a network going a mile that way.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. So the reason why we use those terms is because that has a lot to do with the technical way that we engineer and we roll out service within the community. We're not, we're not going just a straight mile in any one direction, but from a connection point, generally speaking, 1,200 to 1,300 feet is about where we're heading in each direction. It could be more, it could be less, you know, but, but generally speaking, that, that pretty much picks up on how we actually deploy in the community. In addition, this is how all of our other franchise agreements are set up. And it is also consistent with the way that companies like Google and other fiber greenfield development companies are deploying across the United States.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah, and Levi, while you're here, my understanding, maybe you can tell me if I have this right, what you're waiting for is for a group of neighbors who have an interest in receiving the services you're offering to contact you, to show that there are, what, 15 people in the neighborhood that are prepared to subscribe initially. And so I guess my question is, that's kind of a passive way of moving into a neighborhood. Do you, are you recruiting, do you have a sales force that is recruiting neighborhoods to consider your cable connection?
Yes, we do. I believe we, it was, the last time I was here in front of councils, it feels like... I believe we, it was, the last time I was here in front of councils, it feels like that could be, sorry, I've had about a dozen different city council meetings in the last three or four months here, so it's all kind of blurring for me. But the last time I was here is when we really started to initiate our, our outside sales efforts. Since that point in time, we got the first neighborhood to the required percentage, and we're almost there in the second one. We're having a lot of success. We feel really good about rolling out to 10 to 15 neighborhoods here locally, you know, having that kind of in the pipeline when the spring hits us and we can start construction again. In addition, I do want to point out one other thing. Most of the fiber agreements that are out there for overbuilders, like what we're doing, whether it's against Comcast, Time Warner, whatever, Google really provided the template for all of us. And in that template, one of the significant differences between what we've put in front of you and what you would have in front of you with, with other overbuilders is, we're compelled to build at any point in the future where this is reached. The way that a lot of these other agreements are is, we have a sign-up period for X amount of days, and if you don't reach it then, we never have to build. That's not how we view our, our relationship with the community. Our goal is to get there 100%. We realize that there's going to be a significant portion of the community where we're going to come in, they're going to realize the value, it's going to be a great partnership, and we're going to get kind of this tidal wave of, of people coming on board. But then, there'll be some others where we, where we don't. And, you know, our position is not to abandon those areas, but to use the inertia to do projects like digital divide projects and, and working with UC2B and the community itself to get into 100% of homes. Because one thing's for sure, if you don't have a device, if you don't have a computer, you don't have a need for the internet, and if you don't have a need for the internet, we're not the best value proposition out there. Combining with the internet, that's, that's what really creates the value with cable TV.
Yes, I've got one more part to my question.
Go ahead.
I guess this is the next thing that I'm thinking about. So, what you're going to provide is, you're going to provide the, the cable networking down the main part of the street. It will still be, is, am I correct to imagine that it'll still be up to the individual homeowner to connect to the house? Now, under the grants that we've had from the federal government, the connection fee to the house was covered or reduced. And my concern is that even if there are individuals that are interested in receiving fiber optics to the home, that the cost of connecting still remains high, therefore, we're looking at neighborhoods who can, whose mean income can afford the connection fee as, as being favored in the community compared to those neighborhoods where, because of low income, that's a challenge which may not be able to be surmounted.
If I understand your concern correctly, I, I think that that can be alleviated just by the fact that we don't require you as the resident to pay the connection fee regardless where you live. That's part of our business model, that's incorporated through our monthly reoccurring revenue.
Then who does?
We pay for that.
You do.
Yes.
So, you're going to, you're going to connect the houses for them at no cost?
Well, it's not at no cost, it's, it's built into your monthly reoccurring revenue.
I see.
So, but there's no separate line item there, it's just part of our, our business model. We realized right early on that people, if you come and go, hey, I've got this great product, it's awesome, give me $300, $500, and you can connect, you're never going to get enough people on your service to, to pay for the construction to get by.
Okay, well, that does answer a question that I, it was a concern of mine.
Yep.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons? Yes. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries. Reports of special committees. I don't believe we have any. Reports of officers. I would like to just say thank you for supporting the tax levy. I think we are probably the only government in Champaign County that has actually lowered its tax levy. I want the news media to notice that, since a lot of things get kind of overshadowed. So, thank you very much. I think it was the right thing to do, and I think we've come up with some, a really balanced program for financing the raises for our employees and still funding our pension systems at a very high level. So, that's all I have to say. So, on to new business. There are some appointments here. I'm recommending Chris Stor to the Plan Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Robert Nagel for a term expiring June 30th, 2015. And Brian Cunningham to the Community Development Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2016. Carol?
I'd like to move the acceptance of Plan Commission Chris Stor, Plan Commission Robert Nagel, and Community Development Commission Brian Cunningham as presented by the mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes?
I just want to thank Bernadine Stake for her long service on the planning commission. I understand that she was, has served there, I don't know if it was 20 years or more than that.
More than 20.
It's forever. She's been a voice of intelligence and concern, and she's often brought up topics of concern that were unique to herself, but, but showed a lot of conscious, consciousness and concern for effects of change for the environment and for the neighbors. And that, and her replacement is Chris Stor, he's a neighbor of mine. I actually supported his nomination or his recommendation. He's a really solid contributor to the community, and he helped greatly during Citrus City Program in China and Africa, and I think he's going to be an excellent, an excellent addition to the, the commission. And I really have to thank all the people who agreed to have their names on this list. And so, I really support that, and I'm going to vote for these people.
And I would point out that Bernadine Stake served on the Urbana City Council.
Yes, she did.
And so, we have very good people serving on our commissions, our boards and commissions, and real active participation by the public in Urbana. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Diane?
Before we adjourn, I would just like to wish Representative-elect Carol Ammons best of luck in Springfield. You are moving on to bigger things, but it's not, you're not going to find a better place to be than Urbana City Council.
In Urbana, that's right, you're right. Thank you. And we will be.
I may be back in the meeting.
We will be meeting on Wednesday at 5:30 here to pick up the executive sessions that we had on legal issues. So, we'll have Fred Grosser and Jim Simon there. So, this isn't your last day.
No, it's not, I'll be back.
So, thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.